Good evening and welcome to the October 20th meeting of Troy City Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of this meeting. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation by Mr. Tom Kendall. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in prayer. Dear God, thank you for the bounty you bestow upon us on a daily basis. Be with us, watch over us, watch over those who are in foreign lights protecting our nation in the world. Be with our firemen and policemen as they do their day-to-day jobs and keep them safe. Be with all the citizens of our fair city. In his name we pray. Amen.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist. Mrs. Sneak, here. Mr. Heath.
Here.
Mrs. Schwayzer.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Trembley.
Here.
Mrs. Oda.
Here.
Mr. Kendall.
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mr. Twist. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Kendall to excuse Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Madam President, you interrupted him on. He just texted me, he said he may be just 10 minutes out, so I don't know if that's going to affect anything.
I think we still have to excuse him and then make the minutes.
Yes, that is true. Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Trembley?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist is excused.
Tonight we have a public hearing on O-31 2014. Mrs. Knight, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance changing the zoning of bin lot 2176, parcel number DO8022170, in the city of Troy, Ohio, from M2 Light Industrial District to R5 Single Family Residential District. This rezoning has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. It is the address of 1200 South Crawford Street.
And now to clear the public hearing open, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the ordinance? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak against the ordinance? Seeing that, I declare the public hearing closed. Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the October 6th meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of council, October 6, 2014. The presentation was made by the Troy City Citizen Center, whose council members were introduced. Committee reports law and ordinance. Committee recommends legislation be prepared to accept dedication of right-of-way on Peters Road. Committee recommended legislation be prepared, amending the sign code to remove color restrictions for changeable copy signs. Recreation and Parks Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing grant application for funding assistance associated with bike trail paving. Resolution number R42 2014, contract for Marina Building Improvement was given second reading and failed suspension. Resolution number R43 2014, applications for funds related to recreational trail resurfacing was given first reading and adopted. Or December 029 14, dedication of right-of-way first reading and adopted. Or December 030 2014, amend the ordinances related to the signs was given first reading and was adopted. Or December 031 2014, rezoning was given first reading, problem very complex, council is running at 7:36 PM.
Are there any additions or questions to the minutes?
Move to accept the minutes as read. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Phillips to approve the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Trembley?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
This is approved.
We'll begin committee reports this evening with the Safety and Health Committee and your person, Mrs. Robin Oda.
Committee members Phillips and Sneak met on October 6 to consider the consent legislation provided by the Ohio Department of Transportation, otherwise known as ODOT, regarding the ODOT paving project for part of State Route 718 from Washington Road to I-75.
I don't think that's the safety and health today.
Yeah, see, that's what happens when you can't eat your computer or work. All right, safety and health. Committee members Oda and Clark met on October 6 to discuss the 215, 2015 funding of the Miami County Health District. Troy's funding is based on mileage equivalent as paid by 22 of the 24 political subdivisions in the county for public health services. Troy's payment is funded from the general fund. Troy's 2015 Miami County Public Health funding would be $330,656.24, which is a decrease of only 51 percent from the 2014 funding. It is the recommendation of this council that legislation be prepared to approve the 2015 funding to the Miami County Health District for public services for Troy citizens in the amount of $330,656.24. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Al Clark, Mr. Brock Heath, and myself as chair.
Does anyone have any questions on the report? Thank you, Mrs. Oda. Our next reports are from the Streets and Sidewalks Committee and Chairman Mr. Bobby Douglas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On October 6th, committee members Sneak and myself met to consider the consent legislation provided by the Ohio Department of Transportation, or ODOT, regarding the ODOT paving project for part of State Route 718 from Washington Road to I-75. This project will be bid by ODOT in 2016 and the work will be done at no cost to the city. The recommendation of the committee was to, was that consent legislation provided by ODOT be approved related to paving a part of State Route 718. And we did support the legislation being presented as an emergency measure, and this was submitted by Mr. Heath, Mrs. Sneak, and myself as chair.
Are there any questions from council on the report? You may continue, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, ma'am. Continuing on October 6, Mrs. Sneak and I met regarding authorizing an application for Ohio Public Works Commission funds for the McCade Road Improvement Phase III. The project still includes roadway reconstruction paving, sidewalk, curb, gutter, and utility work. The project area is from the railroad crossing at Monroe Street to the alley west of Lake Street. While this project has not yet been designed, it is currently estimated at $1,919,400. The OPWC grant that would not exceed $525,000. This project would be designed in 2015 and constructed in 2016. After all the consideration, the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to file an application for OPWC funds for the McCade Road Improvement Phase III. As the application deadline is October 31, we again support emergency legislation on this. And this is submitted by Mr. Heath, Mrs. Sneak, and myself as chair.
Are there any questions or comments from council on this report? Do you have anything further, Mr. Phillips?
No, ma'am, that's all.
Our last report this evening is from Chairman Mr. Doug Trembley in the Utilities Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee members Clark and Trembley met on October 15 to consider authorizing the Board of Park Commissioners to enter into an electric right-of-way and easement document with DPNL to provide for an underground easement related to the placement of the lighthouse structure at Treasure Island Park. The lighthouse is the Troy Foundation's legacy gift to the city in recognition of the bicentennial. The fabrication of the lighthouse structure is nearing completion. The right-of-way and easement will provide for the documentation for DPNL's removal of a pole and overhead electric and providing underground utilities for the lighthouse so the base can work, so that the base work can be completed. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Board of Park Commissioners to execute an electric right-of-way and easement to the Dayton Power and Light Company associated with the lighthouse structure project at Treasure Island Park. So that the right-of-way and easement can be executed as soon as possible, we support emergency legislation. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Twist, Mr. Clark, and myself as chair of the Utilities Committee.
Are there any questions or comments from council on this report?
Madam President.
Mr. Clark.
I appreciate the gift from the Troy Foundation of $75,000 to be able to put this lighthouse there, and it's very gracious and generous of them. I see that the bids came out at $50,000, so just questioning is where the other $25,000, will that go back to the Troy Foundation, or will that go to our job fall, or where will it go?
Madam Chair, Mr. Clark, the amount that you're quoting is for the actual fabrication of the lighthouse. In addition to that, there is significant amount of foundation work that will be done, as well as some landscaping, so we will use the entire amount of the grant for the project.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. We now open the meeting to citizen comments. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Livingston is our timekeeper. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address before addressing council.
Lester Connor, 1210 South Clay Street, Troy, Ohio. My concerns are with the figures of the Marina, $113,600 for restroom remodeling, $83,500 for fireplace room renovation, $92,000 for snack bar. You know, I mean, I don't know, I have never seen any of the pictures or anything of what the building is going to be like after it's done, and my only concern is, I'm thinking that this is awful fancy. You know, I mean, it could have gotten done at a cheaper rate with, you know, I mean, that's a lot of money. I mean, I know a friend that had their bathroom remodeled, everything ripped out and gutted and all, everything put back and everything new for $6,000. You know, I mean, yes, that's a residential dwelling, I realize that, but still, though, I mean, you know, those are astronomical figures that we're looking at, and, you know, it's gonna, I just don't understand how it could be that expensive. I mean, I'm used to working with $100, maybe $1,000 every once in a while to pay a bill, but, you know, these figures here, I mean, they just blow my mind. Maybe I'm completely way off base, I don't know, but it just seems to me like we went above and beyond trying to get something real fancy, and it's only going to be used for so many months a year if it isn't flooded. You know, I mean, it scares me, and 25 years of loan on this stuff, at $640,000 a year, it scares me. I don't, you know, and like I said before, if this fails and it doesn't produce, who's going to pick up the tab? I think we are, as the taxpayers here in the citizens of Detroit, going to be the ones left holding the bag. I hope this committee continues to vote the way they was and continues to think in the line that they were thinking on this issue, and I support them 100 percent, and I hope this continues to go in that same direction. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience have any comments at this point in the meeting?
Good evening, I'm Dick Church, Mayor of Miami-Sburg. Last week I had the pleasure to be in Pickla, part of the River Corridor, and I understand that some comments that I might have made in the paper has been used in opposition of maybe this project. I'm just here tonight to reassure you that city of Miami-Sburg is progressing with Riverfront Park. I'm still a big advocate of everything that's going on from Sidney all the way down to Hamilton. We have already spent $3 million in the city of Miami-Sburg on Riverfront Park. We had 68 events there this summer. Our bonding capacity does not allow us to go out and get the entire $17 million, but it is still a top priority of the city of Miami-Sburg, and I'm just here to set the record straight that if anybody had any doubts, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone else in the audience who has any comments?
I'm Cindy Shaffer, and I live at 26 and 1/2 north shore. I'm hoping that those who are against this plan, it sticks to their point. I was figuring out today that your 1.5 million that you're going to spend over there is going to be about 1.5, 1.8, and then I was realizing after sitting down that last year we were all in the house for six months, so the most you're going to get out of the boat dock and those kind of things are going to be May, June, July, August. I may go on to give you September. So that would take you a 25-year loan that was going to take us 25 years to pay off, but we're only going to get about 12 years usage of that plan. And I just want to say that I hope that you really take this into effect. I was over, I want to make one comment real quick while I'm here. I was over at the park on Saturday and sat there for an hour, realizing the trees were taken out of the park along the edge, and then I can see over on Market, and I started really upset to think that that park has 2/3 of payment in it. You have two basketball courts, you've got the tennis courts and all that, and now I looked at that big entrance, that big entrance, it looks like you're going to have big trucks going in there instead of being small and intimate, you've made it out of a very commercialized place. So I'm hoping that those who are against this today stick to their guns, because this is absolutely ridiculous to know that we're paying out this money and we're only going to have about 12 years of uses out of 25, if you do the math, and I gave you an extra month. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who has any comments? Thank you. We will move on to resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R42 2014.
And the minutes will reflect that Mr. Twist has arrived. Thank you. Resolution number R42 2014, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio to advertise for bids and implement a contract with Marina Building Improvement. Costs not to exceed $1 million, this is third reading.
Are there any comments or questions from council on this?
Move or duh.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Trembley to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
No.
Mr. Trembley?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
No.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Vote is fired for the resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R44 2014.
Resolution number R44 2014, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio to enter into an agreement with Miami County General Health District for health services. The 2015 payment will be $330,656.24, which is a reduced amount from the 2014 costs. This is the first reading.
Are there any questions from council on this resolution?
Move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Phillips to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Trembley?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Move or duh. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwayzer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Trembley?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R45 2014.
Resolution number R45 2014, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio to make application for Ohio Public Works Commission OPWC funds for the McCade Road Improvement Project Phase III and declaring an emergency. The grant application is for $525,000, approximately 48 percent of the cost first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Schwayzer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Trembley?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move or duh. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Trembley?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R46 2014.
Resolution number R26 2014, a resolution authorizing consent and cooperation with the Ohio Department of Transportation for a resurfacing program that includes State Route 17 within the city of Troy and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading of the resolution, a part of State Route 718 that will be resurfaced within the city of Troy, this is at no cost to the city.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
Move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Trembley and seconded by Mr. Clark to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Trembley?
Yes.
Yes.
Move or duh. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Schwayzer to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Trembley?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R47 2014.
Resolution number R47 2014, resolution authorizing the Board of Park Commissioners to grant a right-of-way and easement to Dayton Power and Light Company, DPNL, and declaring emergency. This is associated with the electric work to install the lighthouse structure at Treasure Island Park first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Trembley to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Trembley?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Trembley?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak? Resolution is adopted.
Move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to read ordinance O-31 2014.
Ordinance number O-31 2014, ordinance changing the zoning of bin lot 2176, parcel number DO8022170, in the city of Troy, Ohio, from M2 Light Industrial District to R5 Single Family Residential District. This is the address of 1200 South Crawford Street, has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. It was a public hearing this evening, and I think the Law and Ordinance Committee is going to meet next Monday to provide a recommendation to council.
Do we have a time on that meeting next Monday?
My turn.
Thank you. That concludes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
No, there are not.
Are there any comments this evening?
Just a few. Obviously, we all realize that Bakers Night's coming up, Halloween's coming up, a lot of activities associated with that beginning this Saturday. For those who are interested, annual Halloween parade, and also costume contest, and the Main Street event that allows a little trick-or-treat service to go around downtown. All take place in the morning of the 25th on Saturday. It happens to coincide with Make a Difference Day that many of us have participated in over the years. It's a great project, too, to help community service projects, and people volunteer. Troy Community Works helps sponsor that activity. Main Street sponsors the Halloween parade and costume along with the Optimus Club. Don't want to get fined, so I'm a member of Optimus Club, so I take care of that. And that kind of is the prelude to what we've been saying all along, but we still get calls. Thursday, October 30, from 6 to 8, is Bakers Night in Troy, Ohio, and throughout Miami County. That's a little different, and some people keep calling, and we want to make sure that's Thursday night. Now, to add that, it also is the day before the big game, Troy versus Pickla. So there's always a pep rally, usually that takes place, and it's being planned for Thursday night at 8 o'clock on Prattley Plaza. So I encourage you to, you know, if you want to get involved, there are a lot of community activity opportunities there that are taking place this weekend and next Thursday. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tiderton, do you have any comments this evening?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Livingston, any comments this evening?
I have nothing this evening, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Stickell, any comments this evening?
I have no comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Does anyone in council have any comments? Mrs. Sneak?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick question from Mr. Tiderton if I may. I noticed in our items of interest that you said the waterline work is continuing in the area of Frank Street. On that street specifically, do you know if there is any date that we expect that to be finished, because that work seems to have just been not continuing that you can see?
No, but we will let you know. We'll contact the contractor and see what their timeframe is.
I would appreciate it, thank you.
Anyone else in council? Mr. Phillips?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. For Mr. Tiderton, also, under the items of interest, I noted that the brining or the For Mr. Tyrington, also, under the items of interest, I noted that the brining or the testing of the brining indicates that all roads of the city can be brined in an eight-hour workday. Is that correct? Is that going to result in any changes of the snow removal policy or anything that we will be able to brine or be able to remove all the snowwork in all streets in all conditions?
We released a modified policy two weeks ago now. It did emphasize more brining as a component or as a process. We do intend on using that quite a bit more and do as much pretreatment as we can that does, that can, in certain situations, cut down on the amount of salt that we would otherwise need to apply. Of course, there are always those events where brining is not suitable. Just to elaborate a little bit, last year, we had one truck that was outfitted to do brining. It came online towards the end of the season, but we were able to use it in two or three events and saw some improvement. This year, in anticipation of not only a light season, and now with the increased cost of salt, as well as the lack of supply, we do have three trucks outfitted, and using those three trucks, we can, if we are on pace and we have the supply ready, which we will, we can apply to every road throughout the city. And again, we intend to do that as often as we can to help mitigate any of the events that we might get.
I'm hoping so.
I do, it's all happening.
Anyone else on council, any questions or comments? I did notice that the sign requesting comments has been, the traffic signal at the corner of Cedar and West Main has been taken down. Can council soon expect a report on that, or?
Yes, we are, we've collected those, we are reviewing those, we will have a report, not only on that intersection, but the other two that we asked for comments regarding.
Thank you.